Ikea.
Okay. All right, so between the two of us.
Yeah, that ought to be enough to get us all there.
I'll just go in the Miata. Take one person.
You're driving separately.
We'll get down.
Yeah. I could even take the cheap.
Did you get reimbursed for the use of your tractors and flatbed during the parade? I think you should be because, I mean.
Give you a mallet.
Use, use a lot of fuel on it. I mean, all the coin you end up going back and forth and stuff.
How much, how, how much rubber on your shoes did you wear out? Push, push starting that tractor?
No, Matt and I were happy to do it. I'm not worried about it.
Well, we really appreciate it. It really added a lot to the.
And like the city paid for like the, for sign that, uh, Angel painted that said Frostburg Mayor and City Council. So, I didn't, I had six dollars worth of garland and a couple gallons of gas.
I had to do a little bit of law enforcement with her son.
Yeah. Thanks.
It wasn't really me. I, he was still a little stubborn until she gave him the mother look.
Look, yeah.
And at that point, he jumped off the tractor and ran by her and ran to her. So I don't know what that look is, but.
You know what? Lane knows. All little boys know that look.
All right, Mayor, whenever you're ready.
All right, call them in to order. Roll call whenever you're ready.
Um, Commissioner Donnie Carter, Commissioner Nina Forsythe.
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Grove.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Ritchie.
Here.
And Mayor Robert Flanagan.
Here.
Um, so as you know, this is a special meeting in lieu of the regular work session and mayor council meeting. Um, Hayden has one action item, uh, with resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one for your consideration tonight, which is in regards to the timber harvest.
Yep, so we did advertise for the timber package out of Ponty Reservoir. This current one is off of ninety-seven acres of property. Um, we had three different bidders. The high bid was Sistler's lumber. They came in at two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, we had kinda talked about it briefly. If that amount is amenable to everybody, I would proceed. I do have a signed contract from Sistlers. Obviously, it's not signed by you guys and they've been given strict direction not to move ahead until they get the go-ahead from me that everything's been signed off on. Um, and then, uh, to pair with that, there is the, um, invoice amount from Randy Camp with, um, his consulting company. He was the one who did all of the timber cruising for us, estimates, estimates and everything like that. His amount, which is eight percent of the contract amount, would be seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty. So, um, we would take in the two hundred and twenty-one thousand, which Elaine has the check from Sistlers already. Obviously, we won't cash it until the contract is signed and then subtract from that seventeen thousand, six eighty. If that's agreeable, we'll have the mayors sign the contract and I'll give them the go-ahead.
What, what section is this?
Um, if you're driving back there and the reservoir is on your right-hand side, there's the power line that heads up on your left. It would be if you headed all the way up the power line and you got to the first peak of the hill that you can see, it would be on the backside of that power line. So you really won't be able to see any of it from the road, so, but it's a big ninety-seven acre section. Yeah.
Is it a, it's a selective?
And selective.
Yes, yeah. I mean, it'll be, it'll be a pretty heavy selective cut, but it's not, it's not a clear cut by any means, so.
Good.
This money will go into a water surcharge fund, which is reinvested in the treatment plant west. It's typically how forest harvest revenue has been accounted for.
Can we motion a second?
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
Second.
Moving second. There's no public comment. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Sure. Uh, hear that one there.
Ten acres do we have up there?
Um, up there at the reservoir is a little short of a thousand and then in Finsel, there's another two hundred, so.
Cash check.
Cool. I'll give them the go-ahead then. They really wanted to get started though. They, they work a lot better once the ground freezes and they can work whenever the ground's frozen.
Not burying stuff in the ground, right?
Yeah. And then.
Are they using the power line as access? Is that hurtful?
Yeah, they'll use the power line to go up. That'll be there, kinda where they skid in and out of.
What's the timeline on that?
They think three months. So they'll start basically Monday and then they think they can have everything cut and moved and done with, uh, cleaned up within three months, so.
Perfect.
CSO?
Mm-hmm. So, as you know, PACE is in two weeks from today and we have been invited by Allegheny County to present our water and sewer projects to the various funding agencies at that meeting that the county organizes. We've been investing on the water side heavily with ARPA funds because, um, the MDE funding for water projects is not that favorable for the size of our system. And, um, we don't have any major water projects right now identified outside of ARPA funds. Um, so that leaves us with the combined sewer projects and I will let Hayden, we, before we, things have changed, um, for the worse in terms of our funding pro- prospects. Um, we kind of heard that last year at the PACE meeting and, um, Hayden and Elaine met with the funding people at MDE, uh, last week or two weeks ago. Um, and kind of discussed options. So Hayden and Elaine, Hayden and Elaine will chime in as necessary. Wanted to go over those options, kind of what our recommendation is moving forward and make sure you all are in agreement with that, um, so that everyone is on the same page at the funding meeting at PACE.
So, all of our, all the stuff that's currently underway and under construction is still good to go. That's nine B and nine C. Nine B is done. That's pretty well punched out. Nine C is obviously ongoing and winter shutdown now. So that's fine. Then the next phase, phase ten, which is A, B, and C, is where things start to get muddy. For phase ten A, which would be the next project, that's down by Mount Ridge High School, below most of the houses in kind of that swamped area. The, since we applied for that project and received grant funding, has been almost three years because of COVID and changes and everything like that. Initial estimates for that project valued it at around one point two five million. Our estimates now, because of everything skyrocketing, are closer to one point nine million. The grant we've been awarded for that project is nine hundred and eighty thousand. We have already budgeted for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of city funds. Um, where that leaves us is that we have an almost eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall for that project based off of some estimates Ray and I did about two weeks ago. So for ten A, we're eight hundred thousand dollars short. That project can be ready to go to bid by the end of February, but obviously, we're not gonna do that until we know where the money's at. So for ten A.
That wasn't the one where we were gonna just line the pipe?
That is, yeah, that's the pipe.
Cause it seems like it was supposed to be less than that. Okay.
So, ten A, about an eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall. Ten B and ten C are pretty much identical. It's just different areas of the same neighborhood, same type of work, same type of remediation, same approximate cost. We're looking at anywhere from three million to three point five million for each chunk. So about seven million total. When we talked to.
For A, B, and C?
No, no, no.
For B and C, that's okay, yeah.
Correct. So, when we talked to MDE, you know, they pretty much told us there are some little pockets of money you guys can apply for. They're not gonna be very much money and speaking bluntly, we're not gonna get them. So, they advised us to apply for loan and loan forgiveness. The way that works is that you can, you can get as much loan as you want, but your loan forgiveness only goes up to fifty percent of the project or a max of one point five million. So.
That's from the state?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is being supplemented with the, uh, I, by part of Senate Infrastructure Act. So that's where that federal money is being funneled into this program as well for loan forgiveness.
So, for instance, last year, we applied for ten B and we received, uh, one point four eight, so, um, one point five million in loan, an SRF loan, and we also qualified for one point five million in loan forgiveness. At the time, we turned it down because we figured, oh, we'll just come back next year when we're at the higher point in the grant cycle. Well, after meeting with MDE, they were like, yeah, we don't, we weren't really sure why you guys did that because it's only gonna be loan from here on out. You're not gonna get any more grants, basically. Um, they said that we can re-up for that same loan forgiveness and we should be able to work that out and go for that. Um, so that's an option for ten B is to go back with MDE and say, we actually want that loan and loan forgiveness now. Um, we would probably qualify as an impoverished community, so our loan rate would be like point nine percent, so almost nothing. But it does not, it's not, it does not do us well to lump all these projects together and do one giant eight million dollar loan because we would only get one point five million in loan forgiveness. Whereas if we break them into different projects, we can get one point five, one point five, and another smaller chunk for a different project. So for instance, for ten C, instead of doing ten B and ten C together in one giant loan, we would just do ten C down the road once we're done with ten B. Um, cause you know, they're basically identical.
That would probably slow things down, though, right?
Correct. It would, it would probably kick the CSO timeline. We would probably finish this whole phase, I would imagine, twenty twenty-seven at the earliest. So, you know, figure probably two years per project. Could push things along, but with the contractors we have in the area, I would not, I would not bank on that. Ten C, obviously, we haven't really applied for anything yet. Um, what MDE has?
No, we have.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. That one would be the, would be nearly identical. Um, one point five in loan, one point five in loan forgiveness, and then obviously make up the rest with our, with our chunk, um, if costs fluctuate. So, we just need to decide, can we absorb, you know, three million dollars worth of loan between two projects spread out over however many years we decide for a loan? Keep in the back of your mind that we do have several smaller projects we can apply for, which would be Frost Avenue, which would be, but there's also Hill Street and North Grant. North Grant's already designed. When it was designed, the estimates were three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would imagine it'd be closer to four hundred thousand.
Seven hundred.
Yeah. Um, so that was already designed. Um, it's done. We can, if we wanted to, put these on the back burner and just apply for North Grant this year at PACE, we can. We have everything we can throw at them and say, hey, this is done. What can you do for us as far as money? Being that it's such a small project, comparatively, they might say, you know, here's money we have on hand. It's a small project. I wouldn't bank on that, but.
Would hurt.
CDBG is an option with North Grant too, cause CB, CDBG will fund projects up to eight hundred thousand dollars. So, if it's a four hundred thousand dollar project, it's a low mod income area that's being served. That is a grant source and I expect they will be at that meeting and, I mean, that's the nice thing about that meeting is you can have these informal dialogues about how can we achieve this.
So, kinda what we would like to decide today, um, so we know how to present at PACE and what to apply for, is do we wanna move ahead, come back to the loan and loan forgiveness for ten B? Say, we'll take the one point five loan and we'll take the one point five loan forgiveness and we'll move ahead with that project? Or do we want to go for stuff for ten A, try and make up that eight hundred thousand dollar gap? Or do we just wanna say, we can't do that right now. Let's push all that off and apply for something for a small project like.
Let me, let me chime in here real quick. You know, we've had three or four water leak in a lot of this, you know, B and A, you know, A, A, B, and C are Washington Street. You know, a lot of it is, Washington Street's in terrible shape right now. It's probably one of the worst streets in the city right now. We've had three or four water leaks on that in probably the past year, year and a half.
Just had another one, yeah.
You know, I mean, i- it's in terrible shape right now.
Yeah.
When we discuss, I think staff recommendation would be ten A needs to get done. That's a huge source of water getting into the sewer system, which we pay to treat, but we don't have a revenue. You know, our customers as a whole have to absorb that cost. So getting that swamp water out of the sewer system is going to help everyone.
Yeah.
We could either fund that eight hundred thousand dollar balance or difference with ARPA funds and that would be like the ARPA contribution to the CSO projects and/or apply this spring to, for a community project funding, an earmark with the feds to get that eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't know that this project's gonna rank that high because lining a sewer pipe is not nearly as exciting as building a childcare facility. Congratulations, that was in the president's budget for five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and some change. So that's been funded, the childcare center. I don't know that this project's gonna be glitzy enough to get funding through that. But, and I mean, the nice thing about ARPA and the MDE funding that's already in place is it could go to bid this summer and get moving.
That's what I would recommend, but especially because it would be the most efficacious project.
Well, another thing too, you know, thi- this pushes us over that ninety-five percent threshold and gets them off of our back too.
And we'll see, we'll see, we'll actually see a lot bigger, you know, w- water, you know, water health returns from this project than we will the two preceding projects after it, so.
I mean, we're, you know, we're at the end here. We're getting close to it anyway, you know.
Now, ten is, refresh us. Ten B is.
So, um, if you're, uh, if you're on, uh, Main Street and you're heading east towards Cumberland, Mount Ridge would be on your right-hand side. Um, all of ten, all of ten would be right there from Mount Ridge.
Right. I mean, you could distance it to ten B and ten C.
Oh, Sleman Street, Sleman Street.
Sleman Street, yes.
Ten B would be Sleman to Grant, uh, ten C, or B and C split by Sleman between Mount Ridge and Grant. So it's basically two halves. And then ten A is the bottom stuff.
Right, that's the, that's the bottom stuff. I mean, in order to get to Washington.
Um, finish ten A and then once ten A is done, that's when you can start tying in B and C. We had explored splitting it up horizontally as opposed to vertically, but just by the way the pipes are laid out, it doesn't make sense to do that. So to do Washington Street, finish ten A, and then you have to start B and C. You would only get half of Washington Street at a time. So as you're doing B, you get half of Washington Street. As you're doing C, you get half of Washington Street. I mean, same with all those streets, so.
I, uh, so, like, separate from this, but obviously related to this is our effort with the county, Cumberland and Lavelle to renegotiate the consent order to extend the timeline because that consent order, we are supposed to be in compliance by twenty twenty-three October. And that obviously isn't happening and we're all tied together. Cumberland has a lot more to do left than we do, but we still have a lot to do. More than nine months' worth of work to do. So, um, I think it's important to, with our relationship with MDE, whether it's the regulatory side or the funding side, is sure that we're contin- we're committed to keeping this cycle going. It's going to change that we're not paying for design funding for the surcharge, with the surcharge revenue, but we're paying debt service with the surcharge revenue. And, I mean, I, tha- that's the big consideration for you, is twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, that surcharge was created and we're gonna get through these projects and be done. And now that surcharge is gonna continue for twenty to thirty years.
Paying off loans.
Yeah. But I talk, you know, I brought my utility bill in today from outside of the city and county and it's probably seventy dollars more than a city resident and I don't have trash service on it. So, because I'm paying debt service. So if we could keep, I think with, if the loan amount stays around the three million dollars and I think we all know we're gonna have to get creative with funding when it comes to Frost Avenue. But if we can keep the loan amount manageable and get this te- this big project knocked out, I think the surcharge rate.
Can stick the same and not keep going up or anything.
When we get past that three million dollars, that's when it's gonna get squirrely, yeah.
So we get, but see it, with the current surcharge rate, we could pay the loan, the access on the loan side.
Well, that would have to be determined based on the final amount of the loan and the rates.
Right. You know, we're going, are we in the ballpark?
We've seen surcharge revenue going down every year because the number of EDUs, uh, are shrinking. As consumption goes down because the surcharge units are based on consumption. So that revenue has gone down. Now we have paid off part of the debt, you know, in earlier years. We still have outstanding debt. In my mind, this is a prime use of ARPA funds.
Yeah.
I agree.
For, for this purpose, to avoid debt because you're, you're meeting an immediate need of projects. Otherwise, the residents are going to have, you know, this debt to pay for, for many years. So, I, I highly recommend prioritizing use of ARPA funds for these types of issues rather than incurring additional debt to the extent that we can afford it.
Now, we're, how are we standing in the same thing?
Projects and requests.
I mean, like, we. I mean, thi- this, you know, it.
We don't have, like, we don't have six million dollars of.
It, it isn't there. So there ha- there will have to be debt under.
And I should say too, there, there will be opportunities to try to offset some of the costs. For instance, safe routes to school, um, to do the sidewalks. We'll be applying for, um, grants for safe routes to school for all three of these projects to try and bring some of the costs down, um, to get some of that stuff paid for. Um, but it's obviously not gonna cover all of it, so.
And if we could st- you and I have talked fifty times now, if we just, you know, we grind three inches, come back with two, we still got water, we still got water pipe problems.
Yeah, exactly.
And we start, and we're gonna have, then there'll be a sewer problem. That'll be something else.
Right.
So, we're gonna be having, we have, we have to dig a bed open. That's all there's to it. I, you know, I agree with Lane. We have ARPA funding now. It's just to a certain extent that we can put towards this.
Yeah, and I think people are gonna question, yeah, why are you taking all these loans out if you have all these pieces in there?
Right.
Yeah, I was that too, yeah.
Right. I mean, I know we've, you know, put it towards other things, but to stay out of debt just to a certain level, you know.
To reduce the amount of debt.
Yeah, right.
You're not going to eliminate it.
Right.
Under the, the way the funding has changed.
Sure. We knocked Ponty Dam out once. May.
Well, there's two different pieces of debt. One will be this year, the other one. I'd have to look at my debt schedule. It still goes on until one more year now.
The other.
I thought you said May. You were looking for, I thought I remembered that. Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know.
The, just like the, the things at play is when you're investing ARPA money on the water side, you're getting any water loan you're going to get is gonna be.
Much less advantageous than.
Yes.
You better use on the water side and use.
Better to use ARPA on the water side.
Right, and then use it, uh, loan or whatever on the sewer side.
Yeah. So then you get into the topic, well, do we wanna use ARPA funds to just do the water lines on Washington Street and McCullough? And make up separate projects. Do a water line project in that area and do a CSO project in that area. That, it gets a little.
But does it make sense to tear up one side of the river?
No, no.
And then tear up the other.
You would almost have to do it where two separate projects, which you tie them together, so.
The one loan for Ponty Dam is at the end of June twenty twenty-one. We still owe two point six million. The other one was down to about seven hundred thousand. That's the seven hundred, that's the one that'll be paid off later this year.
What does that free up for us?
Well, that's di- here, before we were looking at CSO revenue. Ponty Surcharge revenue is different.
Yes.
Two different pots of money.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
But they show up in the same bill.
Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to. Where are we paying on it? Where are we paying on the? What, would that free up once we get these things? Would that, would that be an, an, an opportunity?
So on the big, the big loan at Ponty Dam, the one that we were at two point six million, debt service on that one is around three hundred and fifty thousand a year. In principle on. And the one that'll be paid off sooner is also about three hundred and fifty thousand a year.
So right now.
Current debt we're paying with the CSO surcharge right now is I'm gonna say twenty-seven thousand a year on the, the three remaining debt instruments. Their payoffs are in two thousand thirty-two, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
So water line, ARPA money.
If you, I think, I think if you put the eight hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA, from the ARPA money towards ten A, based on what has already been approved for other, like, priority water infrastructure projects.
It's gone.
It's gone.
And we figure ten A puts us at ninety percent?
Yeah, maybe a little more.
There, let's, let's get this knocked out.
And, and the other thing to consider in like these paying off Ponty, increasing sewer surcharge, keeping the bill consistent, um, is we have NewGen working on the utility rate study for us. So, um, and they will be giving us a model that we can work through or they can help us work through as things change. And, you know, they can help us work through the utility rate issues and, you know, we, this was kind of a, probably in our discussions with them, but, but not certain when we've initially met with them. So, you know, if we can tell them now, like, we're estimating over the next four years, an additional three million dollars in debt service, can you factor that into your rate recommendations? So, based on that, our PACE presentation will be did, what did, did you talk to Jeff about like timing of the existing loan, loan forgiveness awards and if we have to like reapply or if it's still, the offer still stands?
For the OSG stuff, there is no additional consideration. You asked about that as well.
What's that mean?
Remember here, you said, do we need to do anything extra to apply for the OSG grant? He said no.
Oh, okay. Okay, good.
Um, as far as reapplying for the funding, he just said to reach out to them and they'll reinstate the funding package that we were previously selected for. And then as far as loans for future projects, notification of availability of loan funding is in the fall following the application. So if we apply now, we would know about it in October. Then there's a few more steps from there to secure the funding, but you can start the process once you're notified. So for ten B, or for ten C. Or if we even wanted to apply for a loan for ten A for that eight hundred thousand, we wouldn't be able to actually start the construction until probably spring of twenty twenty four. Which kicks the can further down the road, so.
So I think what our recommendation for the pace presentation would be is an overview of ten A, B and C, how we. Plan to fund ten A with earmark or ARPA funds. And then we wanna use loan, loan forgiveness on B and C that we've, that we're just behind schedule on. We've, these projects have gotten bigger, we're still rolling, but it's just, we're, we slowed down. Because the projects are three million dollar projects instead of one million dollar projects. But it's our intent to keep moving forward with these projects, their construction is, on B and C is likely gonna be two years for each of them. That's our intent, another small proj- and then we would pitch the North Grant project to see if maybe C D B G bid on that or someone else.
Yeah, just to see if we can dangle the hook in.
Cause we can't start A until spring of twenty twenty four.
If, if we applied for a loan, if we pay for it ourselves, we can start, uh, probably in March.
Yeah, if we, if you are gonna ta- if, I mean, we can talk about it more after the training, but if we have a feeling that A. We're not gonna get community project funding through the Senator and Congressman's office, where you just wanna advance this project and use ARPA funding. We can be putting it out to bid this spring.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, I, I think if, instead of taking a loan, if we have the funds, we, you know, we should probably use them.
Yeah.
I know we're gonna have to take out loans, you know, I mean, but. Let's pay for it while we can.
Yeah, cause we wanna get started on this one as soon as we can.
Yeah, I agree. And who knows where we'll stand in two years, there might be more grants in two years that we can apply for, for ten C or Frost Avenue or Hill Street. But right now, no grant funding, you know, so, and that's straight from the horse's mouth pretty much.
Alright, well, what about?
That's for the same reason that because everybody else now is applying.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's getting the money for these apartment offset type programs or training programs or sewer treatment plant facilities and. All of our stuff's been pretty well kicked to the bottom of the priority list, so.
There was a legislative change two or three years ago that we weren't aware of that put other, these en- like environmental stewardship. System programs above ours in terms of.
Yours is environmental.
I know, I know, and it's like, it's too.
And mandated.
And like we've, when there's been like M D E policy changes, we've gone to those public hearings and been able, like, we've, were made aware of it and have been ad. You know, were able to advocate for Frostburg and would get us, like, we were successful in getting us back into the grant funding, that happened in like, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen. But this happening on the legislative side, it didn't hit anybody's radar until it was too late.
And if it happened during COVID, then it's even harder to.
So, thinking, close the gap on ten A ourselves then, and then at Pace this year, ten B, come back to their loan. Ten C, similar, and then pitch North Grant.
Yeah, let's just keep moving forward with the plan.
Okay, that is all.
And I don't know if any of you remember Elaine Dietz from the Funding Committee, she's back, so she, they met with Jeff Rattwell, uh, Elaine was back. I was like, oh, that's a familiar face, so.
Yeah, she seems like she's on our side a little bit, so, her is going to be helpful to us, so.
I would hope, and I just feel like, it's been almost a long time folks, and we've made a lot of progress and to be this close.
And that's the same, the same fight Elizabeth and I have fighting, have been fighting with M D E for the past year now. With the, the other side of M D E, and that's a.
Yeah.
I don't even wanna talk about it.
But I mean, when you're like, literally looking at like, just a couple more million dollars and you can kiss us goodbye.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
Maybe that can be a pitch.
Uh, here's the deal, you get tired of looking at this. Slimy four mil, we're out of here, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, how much is there after this?
Uh, well, you said about s- six million total, seven?
Well, so, so.
After ten A, ten B and ten C, af- after that, how much is there?
A, A, B and C together would be close to eight million, and then after that, you have Frost Avenue, Hill Street and North Grant. North Grant is four hundred thousand, maybe about.
Just those three?
North Grant is ju- oh, yeah, yeah, just those three, I mean, there's some little.
We're really close.
There's some little dink and dunk things here and there that you could sort out, but for all intents and purposes, it's. North Grant, four hundred thousand, Hill Street, we don't really know, it hasn't been engineered, but I would put that, you know, a typical one point five project. And then the bear, the elephant in the room would be Frost Avenue, which could be, which could be anywhere from three million to. So, because the tricky thing there is that if you put everything in the middle of the street, you tear up all the bricks. If you put stuff, if you avoid the bricks, you put stuff on the sides of the streets, you have the sidewalks and the trees, and nobody wants to lose the trees, cause they're big trees, so.
How much stuff does go out? My whole block goes out the back.
There's a good bit, eh, well, the worst thing about Frost Avenue is the water lines. The fire, fire, this is six inch water line and I can guarantee you, it's.
Well, I know they tore out one of the, the, the hydrant that used to be in front of Durst, never, you could never get it turned on, they took it out of it.
No, you could, you could take a drink out of that bottle and spit harder than the fire hydrant's there, so.
Well, that does, bricks have to be redone anyways, they're just really getting.
Yeah, we blow up a plow on them every year, so.
It's more about, it's more where we've torn them up and it has, you have to try to put them back and they can get these big dips. The ones that haven't been touched are, they're fine.
If you look at the sidewalks on that street, I mean, they go like this because of the root system.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I get a couple call, I usually get a call every couple of months about ADA access on the sidewalks and I just say that. I, I just make something up about how it's because of the water, we're historic district, we can't completely change them, so.
Right.
But yeah, you cannot, you can't get a wheelchair over stuff, so.
The nature's just like that too, it's fun.
Yeah. Yeah, down from the highest.
Whee.
Jump over.
Alright.
Um. Your department heads will probably be reaching out to you between now and. Sometime in February about budget stuff, so that memo will be going out, that season is upon us. There will be a lot at your work, for your February council meeting in terms of the public hearings for the ordinances and ARPA approvals and just. I'm sure a lot will accumulate, accumulate between now and then. That's all I have, anything?
Still a lot of, uh, water main problems?
We've pretty well tidied up some of the water main stuff, um, we're actually in the, we're gonna start this week, actually we started today. We're, we're replacing two valves in the Washington Street area because. They were not holding and to shut down a section of water line on Washington Street, we had to close eight different valves. To encompassing that whole area, so we're tidying up all that stuff now and we're in the process of getting. Some estimates and stuff at the water treatment plant and hopefully we'll know by the beginning of next week what all that stuff in there will cost. It's not gonna be crazy, it'll be less than we thought, um, but we'll definitely be spending some money there. We burnt up a couple, a couple pumps at the water treatment plant, so.
Our box needs to be replaced, the curb, um, is there any chance that they could get to it anytime soon, because we've been without water for quite a while.
Unless we, oh, you don't have, you don't have water in there?
Well, cause we can't turn off the, um, at the, in the basement, it keeps trickling, we can't turn it off there. So, and it, there, our shower handle thing froze while we were.
Um, burst out.
Yeah, so that's a leak, and so we were trying to shut everything off so we wouldn't just keep.
Yeah.
Getting water down the drain, but we can't even shut it off downstairs, there's still a trickle, so we wanted to get it shut off at the street. It's bent, they can't even get to the box, so.
Yeah, they, they, we should have time next week, so.
Oh, boy.
If not tomorrow, next week.
What was the deal with the water coming out of the draft?
They were in there.
It's still coming out now.
They're, they're, it's going through their meters, so they're paying for it, but it's, yeah, it's.
I mean, it's just running down Sloman.
Yeah, they're, they're, I think they're, they're using it for the construction, um, I think they're just, they must be cutting tile or something, so, but yeah, they're pumping stuff out of their basement.
I mean, it's just flowing down the street there.
Yeah, they're paying for it.
I mean, you, you went up and you s- you saw it, yeah.
Well, through all that bad weather, the cold weather, they had the back, they had the door open, the garage door in the back was wide open.
And Sloman was like an ice, just ice go down through there.
Ooh, that's dangerous.
Yeah.
If you, they work there every single day, yeah, you go up some mornings, you see them pull past out on the floor, sleeping in there.
Wow.
Yeah. Everybody good? Enough?
And Dan's the only one out?
Uh, Gracie's gonna be out too, he's.
He's getting an operation right?
Yeah.
Is me or?